Gray.
Here.
Jerem. Milton. Pauls. Thompson. Mr. President.
Here. Please stand for the pledge and invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just an observation today. I know that Pucketani Phil wasn't very kind to the country yesterday, nor to Omaha appears in the last few days over the weekend, and I think we have some more tough weather coming. So just a word and a thank you to all of our city employees working hard in this weather, from Public Works to our trash haulers, to our police enforcement and everyone else. Please grant them some patience through this tough and cold weather, and we appreciate all the work they do on behalf of the city of Omaha. Thank you.
Yeah, that's right. The mayor got bitten in the ear, yeah.
City Clerk certified publication of daily record on January 30th note as Rep. Council and regular State Council meeting February 30, 2015. A current copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted in white binder on the east wall of the legislative chambers.
Good afternoon and welcome to the Omaha City Council. This meeting is conducted in public and by law and may only address the topics listed on the published agenda. The council will hear testimony but will not engage in debate of issues with the public at this meeting. During testimony, it's not appropriate to applaud or convey disapproval. These actions only detract from the formal decorum of the meeting. At this time, please turn on for a mute and electronic device.
Zoning ordinance on final rating planning board attachments will take items five through seven. It's one case. Five is ordinance to rezone property located southeast of 100 of I-680 and Irvington Road from Development Reserve District to General Industrial District. A planning board and planning department recommend approval. Six is resolution to platent titled "Set in Industrial Park, Lot 2" is hereby approved. A planning board and planning department recommend approval. And seven is subdivision agreement with Warehouse 51 is hereby approved, and we have a request to lay this over three weeks and continue the public hearing.
So moved.
Roll call.
Gernat. Gray. Jerem. Milton. Pauls. Thompson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Five through seven are laid over three weeks, and the public hearing is continued. Item number eight, ordinance to rezone property located northeast of 30th and Hamilton Streets from General Industrial District and R-7 Medium Density Multifamily Residential District to R-4 Single Family Residential District, High Density A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on number eight is today. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Gernat. Gray. Jerem. Milton. Pauls. Thompson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Eight is passed seven to zero. Items nine through 10 are one case. Nine is ordinance to rezone property located southwest 114th and Potter Streets from Development Reserve District and R-4 Single Family Residential District, High Density to DR Development Reserve District. Ten is to rezone to R-4 Single Family Residential District, High Density A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearings on number nine and 10 are today. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearings closed. Roll call.
Gernat. Gray. Jerem. Milton. Pauls. Thompson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Nine or 10 are passed seven to zero. Next case is 11 through 16. Eleven is ordinance to rezone property located northwest of 180th and Harrison Streets from Mixed Use District to Development Reserve District. Twelve is to rezone to Mixed Use District. A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Thirteen is ordinance to approve a major amendment to the Mixed Use Development Agreement, Providing Site Development Standards. A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Fourteen is a preliminary platent titled Falcon Ridge Replat 3 with a waiver of the minimum horizontal curve radius along with conditions is accepted in preparation for final plat is authorized. A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Fifteen is a replat transmitted here with entitled Falcon Ridge Replat 3 is hereby approved. A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. And sixteen is a subdivision agreement is hereby approved.
Public hearings on item 11 through 16 are today. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearings closed. Roll call.
Gernat. Gray. Jerem. Milton. Pauls. Thompson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Eleven through 16 are passed seven to zero. Item number 17, ordinance to approve the Neighborhood Conservation and Enhancement District Inventory and Initiative for the City of Omaha as a element of the city's master plan. A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on number 17 is today. Proponents, please. Mr. Moulton.
Good afternoon. I'm happy to introduce the Neighborhood Conservation Enhancement Inventory Initiative as a member of-
Can you introduce yourself too for the record?
Oh, sure. Jed Moulton, I'm the manager of urban design and preservation for the planning department.
This is Earl's Shatter.
Yes. The inventory is a look at 21 historic commercial centers throughout eastern Omaha that were part of the fabric of the original streetcar network. This work was partially funded by the State Preservation Office as a means to be, not only provide preservation to existing older building stock, but to incorporate some newer zoning tools that we've been using in older areas as well. So the inventory is, really sets out to kind of take stock of these areas and find out which ones have the most need, which ones have the most benefit, the most amount of preservation stock, or in most need of fixing regulations and whatnot to target these areas. So it's rather comprehensive collection of all the variables associated with these districts, and we've found it rather interesting and illuminating about how the DNA of each little commercial center. So the plan also introduces a strategy to begin to propose how we would understand these neighborhood commercial centers as perhaps anchors within a neighborhood that would become the centerpiece for which we could then organize maybe, you know, increased housing density and create a walkable neighborhood associated with these districts. We have several of them that are working quite well on their own. South 24th Street is a very successful commercial neighborhood center. Benson is emerging doing quite well. Dundee is your classic example of neighborhood commercial center, so we also propose a strategy how we could comprehensively begin to plan, work with the neighborhood associations and community members to address needs for the area, and how we could perhaps improve the zoning so that compatible development would be more likely in the future. With that, I'll be here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Any opponents? Public hearings closed. Second, I would just thank Mr. Moulton for his work on this. I know it's a lot of work to go through this process, and he's absolutely right that this designation, I think, is very important for, in particular, our neighborhood business districts, many of which are identified in the actual inventory you're presenting here today. And so this, by function of today, gets approved into the master plan. But then we've talked also what happens after that in terms of how do we act upon what you've done here. We have done that to some extent already in Dundee and Blackstone and South Omaha, I believe, with the NCE designations. But it's a great tool that can apply to everything we're doing. So can you comment on what the next steps would be? And there's been some discussion about having even a CIP line item to further this in the future, right?
Yeah, the strategy is that we begin to work more comprehensively around each district. So comprehensively meaning we would begin to incorporate preservation ideas. So in the Vinton Street NCE, we worked with the business owners and the property owners over a period of a year or more, and we discussed the historic buildings in the area. And some of them were preservationists, and some of them were people that just happen to own old buildings. But we were able to incorporate into the zoning code kind of a minimal level of protection for those historic buildings. So that's one dimension. The other dimension would be we're looking at the streetscape, and is there potential for investment into the streetscape to kind of build that identity, that placemaking value in these districts? Are we targeting our incentives? Are we using, focusing, because now we have state historic tax credits, we have some federal tax credits, and we have our usual TIF that we use sometimes for these projects. So are we focusing our incentives in these areas in a way that's comprehensive? And are we improving the regulation, the regulatory environment? As you may have heard, it's rather complex and complicated in these areas. There's compounded regulations. It makes it rather uncertain for development and investment in these areas. So we're developing a strategy to kind of unify and clean up the regulations so that they are easy to understand by both the neighborhoods and by the developers, and that we've kind of come to the same page in terms of expectations about what compatibility is before the crisis of a proposal. So we would like to improve the regulations and move more towards a form-based code, which is a coding system that is based on physical outcome rather than abstract values of use or, you know, square footages and things like that. So it's comprehensive, and the CIP would be part of that.
Great. I think that's right. The primary value is it can maintain character and create that sense of identity, or continue that sense of identity in these particular areas. I think it's a tool that funders look forward to when these things occur.
Absolutely.
And for those neighborhoods thinking about pursuing this, also be aware, we encourage you to do that, but it's also be aware, this is a lot of work. It's a very collaborative process. Can take sometimes a year or two in some of these previous neighborhoods.
Up to two years, yes. In the end, we're trying to create places of value. The Urban Land Institute refers to it as a placemaking dividend so that investors, for the community and for the investment community, it has an identifiable place of character, and property values tend to reflect that.
Thank you. Mr. Jerem.
I would call the theme to this is back to the future. I mean, it's really taking our city back to what once made it so vibrant, but as we go into the future, preserving the stock that was once there that made things so vibrant. The initiatives, I think it's important for people to know, is not something that the city is seeking to impose on these neighborhood business nodes that are opportunity zones within urban, many of them decaying areas in the city, but something that the neighborhoods bring to the city and initiate this process. It's time-consuming. It takes a lot of planning to do it. But once you've done it and it's set up, good things start to happen, and you've pointed to a few with Vinton Street, with South 10th Street and Little Italy now looking at a public market. And you have opportunity areas like Gifford Park at 33rd and California I could think of as one that might be terrific.
Absolutely.
You can even extend this to Old Town Millard, Elkhorn.
Absolutely.
So it doesn't have to be in the eastern part of the city, but it's a tool in the toolkit that takes what works from the past and adaptively reuses it going forward while paying respect and preserving the architecture of what's there.
Absolutely. We've done three NCEs in the last few years, and there's an overwhelming positive response from the neighborhood that you're engaging them and you're asking them questions about their neighborhood and what makes their neighborhood valuable to them, and what they want to preserve, what they want to protect. I think it goes a long way to build community amongst different parties and amongst the neighborhoods. The other piece is that it also calls for coordinated action within the city, so that although you're engaged in the community, you still have to look within your agencies and see if you are in fact all trying to achieve the same goal for the same area. And I would say that's a big part of the work as well, is to coordinate our activities to strive for the same kind of goal and outcome.
And we see in some of these others, you then have these things, the Business Improvement Districts start. You then get reinvestment.
Absolutely.
You have a funding mechanism to participate with the public sector and developers in doing all sorts of good things to make the area more walkable and closer to where people live so that they're maybe living a more active life.
Sure. Well, there's many up-and-coming developers working in Midtown who want to achieve the same goals. So you have this unique circumstance where you have the development community and the neighborhood all wanting to build the same kind of place. So from our work, what we're trying to do is clean up the regulations so you can in fact build that quicker and easier, and you can have the dialogue with the neighborhood beforehand about what's the right fit, what compatibility is.
And if you, by way of example, if you looked at item 48 at 38th and Farnham, there would be an example of a developer seeking to incorporate the historic elements of the Blackstone Business District at 40th and Farnham East at 38th as it presents to Farnham with a lower brick-type look. So I couldn't agree with you more that in these areas, once they're set up and Blackstone isn't yet NCE, I know there's Neighborhood Business District there that's been put in a little bit in zoning, but not an overlay like this, but I suspect, you know, it could be coming at some point. It just triggers reinvestment interest as well. And you could look at 24th and Lake. There's a whole number of these nodes. So I look at this as a win-win, and putting it in the master plan is where it should be.
Right. Hopefully, it gets in people's mind that these are special districts, special centers. Put them on the radar, that there's nodes. And the master plan in terms of the land use plan for years has called for this idea of concentrated nodes of activity and vitality. So hopefully, this brings that to the service a little more.
Thank you. Mr. Pauls.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was taken to death when I heard the words Millard and Elkhorn because so many people think it was suburbs out there, and we actually have relatively small communities, and they still think that that's our community. And I just, just a point, many years ago when Millard was annexed, the name came off the water tower. And you cannot believe for years how that irritated people. And a few years ago, the Miller Business Association with other people helped get that name back on there. So there is an identity, and as you look at Old Town Millard, even though it's relatively small, it could be a little niche, and we do have some fresh development going in there. And that's perhaps one of the reasons why we have tried to keep that area from what I call deteriorating a little bit by just adding other components to it. So I see this as a potential for those of us in the Millard and Elkhorn area.
Absolutely. I think historic downtown Millard is a perfect candidate. It's an exact example. Historically, it was the neighborhood commercial center, and it's been, the surrounding environment's changed over time. But I think you start with a vision with the neighborhood about the potential of what it could become, and perhaps how we could return it to its original character or add features to it that makes it more pedestrian.
And I do understand, this is not just something you flip on and off. It does take time, which I appreciate. Thank you.
Thank you. No further lights. There's a motion and a second. Roll call.
Gernat.
Yes.
Gray. Jerem. Milton. Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Seventeen is passed seven to zero. Pursuant City Council Rule 7H, due to no meeting being held February 17th, agenda items number 18 through 19 shall be laid over three weeks to February 24th for publication in public hearing. Pursuant City Council Rule 7H, agenda item number 20 shall be laid over three weeks to February 24th. Pursuant City Council Rule 7H, agenda item number 21 shall be laid over three weeks to February 24th for publication in public hearing. Liquor, item number 22, Romeo's Pizzeria. Twenty-two, eighteen, twenty-two, twenty-eight, thirty-two, thirty-six, forty, North 90th Plaza. Request permission for a change in location of their present Class C liquor license to be located at 2385 North 90th Street.
Public hearing on number 22 is today. Proponents, please.
Myron Kaplan, 11404 West Dodge Road, Suite 500. On behalf of the license holder of Romeo's Inc., with me is Mr. Amont, the owner of the operation. All they're seeking is permission to move the license basically across the street from the west side of 90th Street to the east side of 90th Street, and would ask for your approval.
Great. Thank you. I know I talked with Sam the last few days, and if approved today, when does that move actually occur?
Pardon?
When does the move actually occur?
As soon as you approve it.
So it's like tomorrow, then?
I'll try.
All right.
Your name, sir?
You need to introduce yourself by the record. I'm Sam Ammon, the owner of Romeo's Restaurants in Omaha.
Thanks. Any other proponents today? Any opponents? Public hearings closed.
Thank you.
Roll call.
Gernat.
Yes.
Gray. Jerem. Milton. Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson. Mr. President. Twenty-two is adopted seven to zero. Consent agenda. Any member of the City Council because an item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by City Council meeting following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by City Council rules of order.
Public hearings on agenda items number 23 through 32 were held on January 27th.
Motion to approve, second.
Roll call.
Gernat.
Yes.
Gray. Jerem. Milton. Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Twenty-three through 32 are passed seven to zero.
Public hearings on agenda items number 33 through 47 are today. If you wish to address the City Council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by name, address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent. Public hearings are closed. Roll call.
Gernat. Gray. Jerem. Milton. Pauls. Thompson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Thirty-three through 47 are adopted seven to zero. Pursuant City Council Rule 7, if agenda item number 48 shall be laid over three weeks for publication in public hearing. Ordinance is on second reading. Item number 49, ordinance approving redevelopment tax and financing redevelopment agreement with David Kane Properties to implement the Eckhart Court Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Project plan located at 617 South 31st Street.
Public hearing on number 49 is today. Proponents, please. Ms. Hadley.
Good afternoon. Bridget Hadley, City Planning, here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Any opponents? Public hearings closed. Mr. Jerem.
Yes, I don't know if it's more appropriate for you, Ms. Hadley, or if Dave Fanslow is still here. I am supportive of this particular project and do not seek to change this one, but I'm hearing now a growing chorus of people from that particular neighborhood that they're looking for workforce housing, affordable housing, the market rates. While we're, it's almost like we're victims of our success in terms of good things happening in the area, but people who are making up moderate income jobs, who many of whom don't have transportation, rely on mass transit, are feeling the squeeze in terms of what they feel is a decreasing number of options within their budget. So I just want to know what planning is doing, current planning, to address that as these growing number of TIF projects for multifamily come to the city. In addressing that, whether in terms of set-asides, standalone projects, projects akin to what we did at 24th and Pierce, and looking at our city's minimum parking requirements in terms of maybe being an impediment to some of these, so if you can address those issues. So the people who maybe have been talking to me who might be watching this on TV because they're obviously not here today, probably working.
I'll give it a shot, and Bridget, if you want to chime in on the TIF stuff. Dave Fanslow, City Planning. I heard a number of questions. Councilman Jerem, I'll try to remember the ones you asked. I'll work backwards. The parking, the current parking regulations that you mentioned, over the last few years, the department has had a policy in certain areas of town to support a one-to-one ratio as far as for multifamily units. So, you know, 10 units, if you can provide 10 spaces, 20 units, 20 spaces, the code would call for more than that. But again, in certain areas of town, we have supported a one-to-one, one unit per one space for parking. So we're working on that. Jed Moulton, who was before you, five or 10 minutes ago, mentioned that we're working on other infill development standards. There's been some talk about not only providing the parking onsite, but maybe adjacent to the projects along the street, and maybe we could take, give some credit for those parking stalls. We've worked with a few developers. You mentioned 24th and Pierce. We see proposals every so often where somebody's seeking to do workforce housing. It doesn't matter to us if it's market rate or if it's workforce. The department's really not in the business of going out and finding folks who want to do either/or, but we'll review the projects that come before us. We can surely start having those conversations if, you know, talk to the director. And for the folks who come in who don't propose to do market rate, you know, maybe start finding an interest, what interest they have in providing that. There have been a few in your district recently who've proposed strictly workforce housing, and we're working on a few of those projects. So the department's always been open to multiple different types of housing, be it market rate, be it workforce housing, single-family, multifamily. We're open to looking at a number of different types of housing throughout the entire city.
Did you want to add anything to that?
Sure. Bridget Hadley, City Planning. I think what I would add is that that particular area of town, particularly the Leavenworth Neighborhood Association, is a vast area, has been identified as an area for redevelopment through the Midtown redevelopment plan. And needing to have more market rate in that area has been the identification for a number of years. And yes, there has been some success over the last several years with the market rate units that have come online, at least within the last three to four years. I have had some conversations with developers who are working in that area, who have talked to a few people who said, yes, where's the affordable housing market for those who may feel like they are being pushed out or don't have a way to stay in the neighborhood, which I don't think that that's truly the case yet. But there's that talk, and so we've been hearing about that. And as Dave said, some of those developers are looking at ways to add affordable units, whether that might be tax credit units or some other way to get units get units that maybe a lower-income tranche can afford. So I think there's room for all of it. With market rate, and I don't know, I couldn't say what the numbers are per square foot or rents are, but I think maybe on a benchmark or rather a ballpark, you could say maybe low market rates might be six hundred dollars per square, or excuse me, six hundred dollars a month for a one-bedroom, up to maybe you might see a thousand dollars a month for a one-bedroom. So it ranges quite a bit. And you've got a lot of different people who can fit in that category. Some who have very high incomes, some who maybe have very lower incomes, but we need them all in the particular area. So I think with TIF, we're trying to address both with the market rate apartment units that are in that area and coming online and forecasted, as well as talking with developers who are targeting some of the tax credit units to come into that area to address that concern.
Well, I would like to challenge the planning department in this regard. I think the name of the department kind of lends itself to planning as we seek to increase density in the central business district and just west of that in Midtown, particularly where all these jobs are popping up. There's a need for affordable housing for people who are working in the moderate-income job strata who don't own cars. As we seek to implement our BRT, there is more opportunities available for the people who do not, by their living circumstances, use anything other than mass transit and bikes and walk to work and things like that, as well as those who are choice riders that don't need or desire to have vehicles. And it seems to me that we see all kinds of market studies that come through with the TIF apps to support the demand for market rate units. And I wholeheartedly concur with that. And with the Cancer Center coming online and other things going on in the Midtown and Downtown, that'll only increase as I see it. But if we're not studying and doing the market studies to talk about the affordable housing, it's not going to get in there. The CDBG folks tell me there's a shrinking pot of money. The affordable, the developers who are interested in doing affordable workforce housing tell me that there's two types. There's the under-fifty unit, over-fifty unit. And to make these projects economically viable, they're confronting parking standards that don't apply to their job, to the development, but nonetheless are being required of them because of our codes. So I just want to suggest, without sounding critical, that there is a need for a more concerted planning effort in this regard in light of many of the things I just discussed, to make projects that address that housing need viable and come to fruition because there just isn't the acreage available in the central business district or Midtown in order to build out in an economically feasible way the hundred, hundred-and-fifty units without a massive acreage. And so I'd like to see the planning department to better understand the demand, perhaps pursue a study akin to a district to study what the workforce housing needs are and demands in the area so that we can do maybe more holistic planning to address that need.
If I may just add real quick, I know that through Housing and Community Development Division in the consolidated plan, there is a study that one of our, one of my coworkers does do. And they do have an affordable housing, what they call it focus group study that's held throughout the year to really get to that idea of where are the housing needs and the affordable housing needs. Now, whether they've done it specifically in that area, you know, a study for the Midtown area, particularly the Leavenworth Neighborhood Association, that I don't know. But I can tell you that it is something that we definitely look at. And I think with the TIF tool, it is obviously something we would want to utilize that tool to help in that area as well with whether it's market rate, whether it's affordable. We want to bring infill housing into areas that are in need of redevelopment.
And I predict if we, if, what is this chorus that's just starting to have their voice heard, doesn't think that the voice is being heard and we're not adequately planning for this demand, in light of everything else that's going on, I can foresee the day when these, what I would call easy, supportable TIF applications aren't as widely supportive as they should be, which then in light of other TIF criticism communities can coalesce and make the area problematic where it doesn't need to be. So. And to planning's credit, I am, I have been working with Mr. Fanslaw, I have been working with Mr. Fitzher and Murthy Cotie on another proposal that's coming to try to figure out a way to get this project to fruition just to the north of this one. But I see it as a recurring theme that we're not going to be able to do it. And as these sail through, one way I think you can address it is at the planning board stage or your stage, when they come in for their pre-planning meeting, is to have them run the numbers to include whether they can have an apartment unit or two as a set aside for affordable. Because after this is already done, it's too late.
Right.
The banks are signed on, locked in, the construction design's locked in, the contractors are locked in, and it's too late to change it.
That's true.
So I, it's a missed opportunity, but I think it's something we probably ought to be talking about as they come forward.
Thank you, Mr. Gray.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to echo a little bit of what Councilmember Jerem has talked about. But there's one other area that I want to at least explore for a second. Bridgette, we have, when we talk about affordable housing, the way we have to address some of our projects, and you know the one I'm talking about now where we're going to have a little bit of a, I think, issue on Sixtieth and Sorensen or whatever. But anyway, the way they have to designate that as low income, but actually the rents are what might be described as affordable housing, I think therein lies the problem with some of the designations that we kind of use. Am I off-base in that or, help me understand because the terminology that they had to use when they were meeting with the community probably should have been low income. I mean, it was described as low income, but when you look at the actual rents, and I'm thinking more on, along the lines of where the old Mr. C site was, those are, though they had to designate them and describe them as in a low-income bracket, they're actually affordable rents in that unit. And I guess I'm wondering how we do, is there a designation change we need to make or more explanation that we need to do in terms of the community to help them understand what's the difference between low income and affordable housing?
I will take a stab at, try and explain that.
Take a stab. I'm going to take a stab at it too. I'm still stabbing at it, but...
I would say, I believe what you're talking about, it really relates to the financing mechanism. And you're talking about low-income housing tax credits, that's a federal designation, federal term. And they use, I believe it's HUD's AMI, Area of Median Income, to determine what, where those income levels are by household. So the problem is that over decades, when people hear low-income housing tax credit, they think sometimes Section Eight housing or they think maybe very, very low-income individuals or actually, they may even think of maybe transients or homeless people who don't have income or barely have income that are moving into areas. And low-income housing does not necessarily mean that. In the case of like Thirty, Mr. C's site, the former Mr. C's site, and perhaps even Sixtieth and Sorensen, that is, because of the financing mechanism, low-income housing tax credits, there are two different credits, and I won't even get into that.
Yeah.
Nine percent and four percent. And these particular projects that we're starting to see come forward are four percent tax credits.
Four percent tax credit.
Which are more prevalent, they're less competitive, but they're looking at individuals who, whose household income is at least sixty percent of the median. So, and maybe one day I can take time outside of being right here to share that with the...
Only because I've had to deal with it. And when we're talking about affordable housing, you know.
People confuse them.
People confuse them, you know?
Right. Because when you look at sixty percent of the median across the board for family household sizes, whether it's a household size of one, two, three, four, on down, it's a lot of people, a majority of the population. And I think when people start to see what household incomes that represents, they realize, okay, that's people like perhaps you and I. And so it does kind of minimize the pushback against low-income housing. But we have used TIF as a tool to support low-income housing tax credit projects. Problem is with the nine percent, they were very hard to get. And now with four percent, we may see more of that. And that may help solve some of the problems with the affordable housing units or projects that will come online. We may see more of that in the future.
Is it at over a hundred units?
With the four percent tax credits, in order to make it financially feasible, they say they really need to have at least a hundred units or more. So it does mean you're going to see larger projects, more units, more density. And sometimes that's problematic in some communities.
Thank you.
The challenge isn't necessarily what you just said. The challenge is how do you build the structure to get the density you need to make the construction cost viable?
Exactly.
And a hundred units with one-to-one parking, the size and scope and cost to build that structure
Mm-hmm.
does not get the return off the affordable rents
Right.
that the units produce.
Right.
For people who don't have cars.
Right. Because you're not able to charge as much.
Or they don't have them.
Well, that, right. You're not able to charge as much for the same size of project.
To me, there's a, I'm trying to point out, and I appreciate the indulgence of my colleagues, that the issues that are emerging in this area is we do these projects in the inner city, and that includes Midtown, as I see it anyway. And we have a code with these parking requirements. I think we need to look at in terms of modifying their demands in light of the BRT system coming, in light of what Mr. Moulton was just saying.
Mm-hmm.
It all ties together.
It does. It really does.
Complete streets, stuff that we're working on.
Right.
More density, less air pollution.
It does tie together, exactly.
Okay. Thank you. No further lights. Next item.
We'll take Items Fifty, Fifty-One, and Fifty-Two together. They're all flammable liquid storage districts. Fifty is an ordinance to establish a new Class A flammable liquid storage district, A-151 at Ninety-two Fifteen Fremont Street. Fifty-One is a Class B, B-184 at Fifty-Ten F Street. And Fifty-Two is B-185 at Twenty-three Fifteen Eighteenth Madison Street.
Public hearings on Fifty, Fifty-One, and Fifty-Two are today. Proponents, please. See none, any opponents? Public hearings closed.
Item Fifty-three, ordinance to provide for approving a contract with Douglas County to assist in paying of the county's victim witness program.
Public hearing on Number Fifty-three is today. Are there any proponents? See none, any opponents? Public hearings closed.
Item Fifty-four, ordinance to accept the bid of Waste Management Nebraska to provide rubbish container services for the Omaha Fire Department.
Public hearing on Number Fifty-four is today. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearings closed.
Item Fifty-five is ordinance to approve the acceptance of and authorize the distribution of a community-oriented policing services hiring program to fund two full-time Omaha Police Department officers' new hires.
Public hearing on Number Fifty-five is today. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearings closed. I do have one comment on this, just that we talked about this in public safety community a little bit this morning with the chief. And this was the cops grant we all had hoped would be fifteen additional police, but has been reduced to two. So any additional help we can get is better, but certainly isn't the fifteen we were hoping for. But I think it also means there'll be additional pressure on the recruit class we need to consider in 2015 if we are to get to the eight-twenty-five or even the eight-thirty-three the council provided for. I think that class is going to have to be very large to get to where we want to be and need to be, I think as evident in the last few weeks. So I just wanted to point out that we had that conversation. And obviously Number Fifty-five should be approved next week because two helps, but we were hoping for more. Thank you. Next item.
Fifty-six, ordinance to approve the acceptance and authorize distribution of a JAG award to provide partial personnel funding for members of the Metro Drug Task Force.
Public hearing on Number Fifty-six is today. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearings closed.
Pursuant City Council Rule Seven-H, the third reading of public hearing on Agenda Items Fifty-seven shall be held on February twenty-fourth. Pursuant City Council Rule Seven-Z, the public hearing on Agenda Items Fifty-eight shall be held on the second reading.
Roll call.
Gernat?
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Milton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Two forty-five.